Hey, I was back up in our glorious state from Monday, well, Monday night to Wednesday. But yesterday, man, it was spectacular up there yesterday. Sixty-five degrees and sunny. Although, still nicer down here, but it was pretty nice up there.
You're all set.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. Okay, I'd like to call to order Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee. It is March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. It is five sixteen P M. Uh, Lauren, who do the roll call?
Chairman Woods?
Here.
Carol Duggan?
Here.
Dave Nagel?
Here.
Amy Parati?
Here.
Kim Rada?
Here.
And Jeremy Wexel?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Okay, thank you. Our next item is take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one meeting. On March sixth of twenty twenty-five, if someone would approve that as written.
Roll move. Read it ten minutes ago.
Thank you, Dave. And a second by someone?
Second.
Second by Carol. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Jennifer, Architect's Update. I'm assuming it'll be short and sweet.
It will, so I'm not even gonna share a picture this time of a document, but um, we still meet on occasion. There's a few things to go over to finish up our, our closeout documents. I received mechanical um, closeout yesterday. There's been revisions to that, so we're reviewing that document. As the weather gets nicer, um, we will be reviewing some of the site work again. Plantings and fields, so that will be coming up soon, not quite yet. Um, but soon, we want to see that things were established and are healthy. Um, and done in accordance with the contract. Um, so that still is an upcoming um, item, as well as um, finishing up some of the uh, commissioning. And as the weather turns nicer, temperatures rise. Um, Rich might touch on this, or Eileen. Um, we still have some commissioning to do with the air conditioning side of, of things. Um, so we're still involved in, not in commissioning, but reviewing closeout documentation related to, to commissioning and making sure that the mechanical systems all, all set. Um, so there are some things still going on. Um, and we did review the P C O. There's one tonight, three oh three. We reviewed that. Um, and we recommend that for your approval. Uh, Rich will go over that later.
Anybody have any questions? Jennifer? It is winding down.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Eileen, Owner's Project Manager's Update, you're up.
Sure. So as, as Jennifer stated, I mean, we're definitely winding up. Um, the most invoices I have currently are for the ongoing projects that we're doing. Uh, most of the other vendors are closed out. Except for C S G, the architect, I E S and Newfield, and then those new ongoing projects that we have. We're just emailing to follow up on some open items. We do have a meeting again next Tuesday to go over any open items. And then I'm also working with Lauren to get purchase orders for these other additional projects moving forward. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, while we roll right into financial update, if you have it.
Yeah, let me share my screen.
Yeah.
Uh, screen three, I think is the right. All right, we'll start from the top. So as I stated, it's just still a few open items, the architect. Owner's rep. These are all closed, closed. The Commissioning Agent, I E S. And where do I have Newfield? These are all of the current open purchase orders, things that we've asked, and then we have like five percent left in construction. And owner's contingency currently, we have two sixty-four, two ninety-three fifty remaining.
Any?
Does anyone have?
Go ahead, go ahead if you're not done. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, it's okay. Yeah, any questions?
No, everybody's quiet. No hands. So we're still on the, we're still on the plus side here, which is good news. Um, Rich, Construction Manager's Update. Thank you, Eileen.
Okay, um, I'll start on the, on the commissioning side, so I did touch base with the mechanical contractor today on that. Um, there is, part of the discussions on commissioning was extending the warranty on the controls wiring. So that is being done, so there's an additional one-year warranty being provided there. Uh, they are actively trending the system right now, so that's part of the commissioning. It's monitoring and they actively trend all of the data points uh, that the system is reading and making sure everything's staying consistent. So that is ongoing as part of the uh, commissioning and uh, Rick Byleki from I E S is uh, they're in communication with him as well as this process goes on, so. We did have some flow stations and motors that needed to be replaced. Those have been done, so that work is complete. And since then, they've started the uh, the trending for the past week or so. Um, so that is, it's ongoing, and once we get into some warmer weather, uh, the cooling side commissioning will also uh, take place once the air conditioning side starts kicking on with some of these warmer days here. Um, the other part that we're looking at, starting is the uh, the site work, looking at the, the grass and the plantings um, in the, in the building courtyard, as well as outside. So as the weather gets warmer and gets into the growing season, and once everything does start budding, we'll uh, walk with K B A and the landscape contractor. Um, there's a warranty period for anything that, um, any sort of plantings that don't take and needing to get replaced, so that'll be, be part of that walkthrough, um, making sure everything gets uh, either removed and replaced that needs to, or uh, we agree that everything has taken well, so. Um, we're in discussions with uh, with the site contractor for that, that work as well. Um, site contractors also been out there, uh, cleaned up some of the soap fence that we had, protecting the areas that weren't fully seated yet. Or, or rather, that didn't take uh, the grass growing last fall, so um, they've cleaned that up, giving some more access to those fields, and they're gonna be um, obviously, like I said, taking over uh, some of the maintenance and, and making sure everything comes in in the, the spring growing season there for the grass. Um, we've also been working on a couple of warranty issues um, throughout the building. Um, and everything's been going uh, pretty good in that case, so. And just uh, continuing with uh, the financial closeout and the documentation for all the last warranties and uh, maintenance manuals that are necessary.
Okay, any questions for Rich? Yes, go ahead, Jeremy.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make, I don't know if any of those warranty items are the uh, the P T O always knows that I'm going to these meetings and they hit me up, I get these text messages out. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure when the right time is to uh, to bring these things out, but I figure now, good a time as any. Um, I guess uh, uh, they want to get heads up that the bathrooms are having a major issue and there's drainage issues in the first grade hallway. Uh, specifically the special education room, the toilet continues to be backed up. Uh, supposedly, I guess plumbers have been out to snake it, uh, but the hallway smells pretty bad. I won't repeat what she wrote here, sounds like actual, and it's terrible for the kids in the air and the ventilation system and so on and so forth. They're just, they're wondering about uh, any, any known drainage issues, I suppose.
Um, yeah, I've been talking to Eileen about that as well, and uh, we've been in communication with the custodian there. So that was a, an issue previously that um, was taken care of with its existing piping that's in the corridor. And there's some clogging issues, potentially some stuff getting flushed down those uh, toilets that's causing the backups and instantly causing the smell, so. Eileen, I know you've um, spoken to the owner on that one as well. I don't know if you have any more.
And Steve, do you want me to say anything on this?
Yeah, you don't go ahead.
It's so, uh, yes, this was an ongoing issue, and we sent emails last year, et cetera, after the first repair was done, that we had found wipes in the bathroom and that it was a major concern. I know that the staff was spoken to. Um, but this is exactly what happened last time we started, there started, it started with a smell. The toilet got backed up. It got clogged further down the hallway, and it was mostly wipes. Uh, so we knew that this could be a future issue, but honestly, the, the warranty is, is good for a year, and this has already been replaced once. And it's going to need continuous jetting, especially if wipes are being used, they should be removed from the bathroom altogether, but I'm not sure that that could be done.
So, I'm, I'm gonna add in a little bit here, Jeremy, that this, this, this happens in a lot now, uh, and for some reason, we tend to be using wipes instead of toilet paper, and wipes are not a flushable item. So we do have pipes that are probably, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years old, they're fine. But, and they, this has probably worked for a long time, or as long, and wipes has not been around that long, as far as I know. So maybe five, ten years, but they've become very popular. You see them in every bathroom you go in. Um, actually, I had an experience on a piece of property that I owned, that uh, you know, it, it doesn't happen typically right at the toilet either. It happens like forty, fifty, sixty, eighty, a hundred feet, two hundred feet, you know, down your, your sewer pipe. So there's something in that pipe that is causing that wipe to get caught up. Right, so then what, because it doesn't dissolve like toilet paper. One gets caught, two get caught, five get caught, fifty get caught. You know, and whatever it takes to set that breaking point, and then you've got to back up. Um, so the district's gonna have to, to adjust it. They'll have this problem more than likely in all of their facilities. Um, unless they're very lucky. I, I, again, I don't know what the percentage of pitches on the pipe, that would obviously make it a little bit better. Um, the amount of flow that's going through, the more water, the better. Um, but it, it's, it's a, it's a district issue and they're gonna have to address it. Um, from what I understand, Lou, you can chime in if you want, but I think the district furnishes the wipes. Is that true, Lou?
For the most part, we've had a big supply from COVID that we're winding down uh, at this point. Uh, Jason would have a better idea how much we still have left in our warehouse, but they're, you know, at the expiration date or later. And we're just attritioning it out, and I don't believe we're buying anymore at this point. But Jason, I'll have to have Jason to speak to that. Is he on right now?
I don't see him on, no.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I think he's on. I'll have to get an answer for you, I don't know.
Yeah, so again, I, the solution to the problem, I would tell you, we have a, a piece of property that I actually manage for our church, and we have the same sort of issue. We just now have it jetted every six months, and I, I love that you can't file someone in the bathroom and see, you know, what are you doing? What are you flushing down the toilet? Um, so we're just trying to be proactive, um, and that's what I would suggest the district do.
Mm-hmm.
All right, yeah, I understood. I'll relay that to them, but it's something I hadn't even thought of, and I hadn't even thought of since COVID, actually, because I remember that being a thing during COVID, really, uh, people were flushing them and, and some were making septic.
I tell you, Jeremy, everybody uh, to, to look, look at that package of wipes. I've never seen a package of wipes that doesn't say in capital letters, "Do not flush."
Yeah.
No, and it's just for the fact they don't break down, right? Anything else, Jeremy, or that was, that was your hit list?
Well, that's all, yeah, well, you know, you know, it goes. Um, and they said something about the, just the last, the other thing is those finishing touches on the piers, filling in um, some grout work. I guess they're still seeing the rebar in the front pillars, I don't know. Um, and that looked myself.
The bollards you're talking about, the entry to the school?
Yeah, I, uh, I think there's uh, a couple of them have been looked at, and they're just kind of this, you know, the base of the
Okay.
Here is, yeah, I don't know.
That's something that'll probably be addressed by the site contractors in this ring.
That's the only thing.
Gets a little warm.
For this week.
So is, is it the bollards or the piers to the canopy?
I think it's the, the, the base, the uh, the, you know, the kind of the facade, facade around the um,
Around the canopy?
Uh, yeah, 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 mm-hmm.
It might be still flashing that needs to extend to a little bit right at the base. I'll have a look at it.
Right, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to have a look at it.
I think it's, they're talking about the caulking in between the actual bricks, I don't know.
Yeah, that should have been all set.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'll take a look. Thank you.
Okay, but I just jump in a second. Jason is having some computer problems, so he's on, but he can't unmute. So he just sent me a note that the uh, uh, we're all out of wipes in our inventory. So anything that's introduced in there is being brought in by the staff or, you know, families.
Okay. Yeah. All right, thank you. And I know, Rich, we have one, uh, can you order, I think, yeah, for us, a bond? Cost?
Yep, so just one, um, simple one. It's a bond increase for Conacoustics, who is the drywall and uh, A C T ceiling contractor, so. Similar to the couple bond increases we had before, it's uh, their contract value increased. So their bonding company has an additional bill to cover that additional uh, contract costs.
Okay, so then I had an interesting motion that the, we approved P C O three oh three to Conacoustics uh, for a bond increase in the dollar amount of one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Carol.
Second.
Second by Brittany. Thank you, Brittany, and welcome, Brittany. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Uh, review invoices and take action on invoices. I mean, do you have any? I didn't see any in the packet.
No, not on Anna.
Yeah, not on Anna, right?
No.
Okay.
Do you want me to share this other?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Our next item is any other business pertinent to the committee. Um, I think most of you remember, uh, Lou has been working on some additional work, because we had originally a pretty fancy courtyard, uh, got value engineered out very early in the project. Um, and so some things were changed as far as egress in and out of that courtyard. Uh, a door was removed, if I remember right, on B wing, that would have been kind of like a main entry in and out. So the, the district is looking for a better um, way to get kids in and out of there in emergency. And most of these um, speak to that. Um, again, I, Lou was able to just put this together, um, and we don't have to take action on it tonight, but uh, I'll just kind of run down. Um, there is one storm line, because Lou is doing some, or the district will be doing some work that, that projects are gonna pay for. Um, there is a storm drain line that has a root growing through it. It makes sense, so their contractor will come through that's doing the digging um, and take care of that time. So they're gonna either um, just pull the root out and cut the pipe, um, and replace it with what they call a Fernco on both ends, or um, they might have to remove a section of the pipe. Um, and that's, it's a pretty quick fix. Uh, then there's courtyard security, um, so, the twenty-nine thousand five hundred is for sidewalks. Um, allow access to the media center and uh, an area of refuge. And also install a concrete pad at the new door that's gonna go down uh, to the media center. That door now, the kids will be able to egress and uh, enter in and out of the, the uh, the media center as the district allows. Um, I believe the twenty-nine thousand five hundred, if you, there's tabs on the, the lower section of this, when you get this document, you can click on it. Uh, the sidewalk's gonna be in concrete, uh, correct, Lou?
Yes.
That option, which makes sense.
Only three thousand dollars worth, just because of the nature of the handwork that had to go into it.
Yeah, I would agree.
The door openings.
I think it's under walkways.
Yeah.
Under walkway, okay.
Right, no, it's, yeah, that's that one, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It was only a three thousand dollar upcharge to make it concrete, get twenty more years out of it.
So this is uh, Martin Dale in Salisbury, I'm assuming is a mason, he's gonna cut the opening.
Yep.
The new door will go into. Um, Preferred Electric has a cost of seven hundred and thirty dollars for a light to go above that door. Uh, and then there's the new storefront, again, which is the whole new door in media center, goes into the courtyard of twenty-two seven fifty. Um, an additional lock for that. And the last, we talked about this, to be honest with you, I don't know if I talked about it at the committee level. I know I talked with Lou. Um, there is a, a, um, problem that we've had in the past, even in the short time that the school's been done, the rooftop units, um, they can get snow blown into them, and it kind of messes up their function, and they actually can shut down or freeze up and not work properly. So all the rooftop units on the building, um, would get this uh, enclosure to kind of prevent that from happening. And the total would be seventy-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, again, if you guys want to move this forward, we can. If you want a time to take a look at it, I'm fine with that. Uh, and I'll open up for questions. Right now, I think between myself and Lou, we should be able to answer any of your questions, if you have it, at this point. And this, I believe, also kind of winds us down. After this, I think we're done. Um, o- other than getting that we're done, there's no more to approve. There should be no more X's. Carol, I saw you had your hand up. You're muted now, Carol.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I was, oh my gosh, I was pressing the wrong button. I would move forward with this if the committee wants to do it today. I think I don't see that anything is gonna change with it. So that's just my recommendation that we move forward with it tonight.
Okay, yeah, it'll be the same document, you know, when we meet again the first week in, in, in April, as it is right now. It's not gonna change, and um, to be honest with you, I would like to see it move forward, just because the sooner we get approval, the sooner they can schedule the work. And, which means the sooner we can close the project out completely, and we don't have to see Jennifer or Eileen anymore, or Rich. And I'm sure that, because I'm sure they'd like to move on, as much as they love us. Uh, anybody else wanna, wanna chime in? Yes, Dave. Same thing, you're muted, Dave, okay.
Yeah, I got it. Uh, I wanted, no, I, I, I'm, I'm almost certain, like, the answer is yes. Uh, financially, are we all covered with this?
We are. Yeah, we have the money to cover this.
Yep. I felt the answer, the question needed to be asked.
Yep, yeah. Anybody else?
I'm, um, I'm all for moving forward with it.
Okay.
It's a good idea, yeah.
All right, Amy. Jeremy?
Uh, yeah, I think this is fine. Uh, I, I'm for moving forward tonight with this. Uh, but again, I have to ask about the lighting on the backside of the building. Was anything ever done with that, any movement?
Last week, uh, I'm sorry, last meeting.
Yeah, that's been approved, Jeremy. I think you were at the last meeting, so it's all approved. Anything that's approved prior, even though you don't see it done, um, Eileen has encumbered the money. We're just waiting for invoices from the contractor, so P Os could be issued, so the town could pay it, but so there's, we've accounted that, uh, accounted for that already in our contingency fund, so, you know. Um, what figure Eileen gave you today, which was at three hundred and something, three hundred and twenty thousand? Is that what you told me?
No, no, uh, two six.
Three thousand?
We're down to two sixty-four.
Oh, two sixty-four, okay. That's a real number, so we're gonna be just under two hundred. We're gonna be like one eighty-five, somewhere around there, after this motion gets passed. And that pretty much should close us out. Okay? Did I miss anybody? Anybody else? It sounds like we want to move forward.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, I do.
Then I will make a, I will make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Um, and the motion is in the amount of seventy-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars. And it covers the items um, in the spreadsheet as shown on the uh, the screen in front of us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. That was much appreciated. Lou? Third call on your vendors.
Okay.
Okay.
Will do.
Yeah, are they, are they all registered with Lauren? I just, we'll need to get W nine forms, so I'll call you tomorrow to follow up on this. We could get purchase orders.
Yeah, some are, some probably.
Yeah, maybe some are, definitely are some, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm everything tomorrow.
Great, I'll reach out, thanks.
Okay, um, public participation is our next item, which we don't have any public. Comments by members, anybody? Anything for the greater cause? I just want to thank you all again for attending. Um, and actually, with this now, Lou, uh, actually, Lou, Eileen and Lauren, is there any need to meet until the third week of April? There should be nothing, correct?
There's just gonna be some invoices that come through.
But as long as they're under that twenty-five K threshold, see if you can approve them without, and then we can report them to the next building committee meeting.
Okay, so let's, let's
That's perfect.
Yeah, let's assume we're not gonna meet, uh, guys until the third week of April, okay?
Oh, Steve, I forgot one thing. I forgot I E S.
I, I was just gonna say, yeah, I E S.
Oh, my gosh. Um, I apologize. And now, I don't have it open either. You know? I had it open.
Yeah, it'll take, we'll take a minute for you to find it, because this one's important.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't want them dailing us. So I think I E S is a firm that's doing the commissioning for us, and they're looking for an additional seventy-five hundred hours. Um, it's because it's been dragged out a long time. There's been a big problem with the uh, uh, H, H V A C and getting it all tuned in, and they've definitely gone above and beyond, and they've reached their breaking point, and they're looking for an additional seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, to close this out. I know that Eileen has talked to, to Lauren about it. Um, she's talked to me about it. Um, I'm assuming, but I'm not positive that Jennifer is in the loop, but uh, we believe this is something that, that, that should be paid. And again, the amount is seventy-five hundred hours, and that will complete um, the commissioning. There's no additional charge after that. Any questions, comments? I don't see anybody's hands. I don't see everybody. Can you get rid of the screen sharing, then I'll go back to seeing everybody at once?
Yeah, Steve, we can only see the top of your head right now.
Oh, you know why? I'm looking at two screens. Um, my little screen has the camera, my big screen, which I can read everything on, um, is behind me, so I keep pushing it out of the way. Sorry about that.
We're just seeing you from here up.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I, I think it makes sense to pay it. I mean, if we owe them the money and we need them to finish the work, then and as like, it's, it's budgeted for, right?
Yeah, we, we have the money in our contingency, so this would come out of the contingency account, so.
Okay.
Okay, then I would
I, I agree with Amy.
Okay. How do you say in a motion that we approve uh, the in, invoice for seventy-five hundred dollars for I E S to complete the commissioning uh, service for Anna Reynolds? So moved.
Second.
So, I think it was So I think it was Amy for the move and Dave for the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, now we're done. Unless someone wants to comment on anything for the good of the of the Anna Reynolds crowd.
I just want to say that our next meeting or whatever it is in April, I won't be around. I'm on vacation, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know.
It'll be the third week of April, which is
Seventeenth.
Correct. Alright, thank you for letting us know, Kim. Alright, then motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Carol. All those in favor signify by saying
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks, guys. We stand adjourned. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.